All right, good evening and welcome to Heartland Township. The Planning Commission meeting of February 25th. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jeff, would you take role, please?
Yeah, sure. Let's see, Commissioner Murphy here. Commissioner Mitchell is absent. Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Kalani is absent. Commissioner Voight is absent. Chairman Fox?
Here.
And Chair, Vice Chair Newsome is here. And then I guess I'd like to say welcome to our new Planning Director also.
Thank you.
Freylinger, so welcome.
All right, thank you. Next up, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnae, motion carries. Next up, item five, approval of our meeting minutes.
So moved. Support?
We have a motion from Newsome, second from Commissioner Murphy. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnae, motion carries. Next up, item six, call to the public. Anyone this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll close call to the public. We have no public hearing this evening. Next up, item A, Site Plan Application Number 530-F, Walnut Ridge Estates. This is the final site plan for an amendment to a plan development. You guys would like to come forward, grab a seat. We'll turn the floor over to our Planning Director to give us a introduction to the project.
Troy? Thank you. This project, I'm gonna scroll down here to the site plan, so bear with me. This project is an amendment to, and let me rotate the view here. This project's an amendment to, I think I rotated it the wrong way. This project's an amendment to the church plan development. What they're proposing to do is develop the back portion of the church property, which is largely undeveloped, with the condominium development, 65 units. And this is a diagram of that development. You can see the church on the bottom of the screen, a single drive that would come in on the east side of that, and again, the 65 units throughout here. It's being proposed in three phases, with the first phase being, I guess this isn't working. About, in this area would be about the end of first phase. So everything south of there would be Phase One, and then Phase Two would exist just to the north, this other cul-de-sac, and coming around to complete that loop drive, and then Phase Three is essentially just this cul-de-sac up here. And as part of this proposal, they've outlined their phasing scheme, and what project, or what portions of this project will be completed at each phase. This development is the final phase of a three-step process, the first phase being conceptual, the second being preliminary, and now we're into the final phase. At this point, we're looking for a recommendation from this body to then take to the board, and that'll be the end of the plan development process. So I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you, Troy. Anything you'd like to add, or would you like us just to begin with the review letter?
Not at this time.
Your choice. Okay. Why don't we grab the Planning Department letter dated February 18th, and we'll use that as our outline. Throughout the letter, in the numerous pages we have here, there are seven items that are either need a Planning Commission discussion or just a notation. That's something that we requested has been taken care of. So if we begin, the first item up for discussion would be on page four. And the item to discuss is about the center of the page. It says, "At preliminary, it was requested that setbacks relative to future accessory structures and sheds be considered." Would look like you've taken care of it. So a note that we asked that it be done, apparently it has been done. Okay. Item two was, "At preliminary meeting discussion took place on the need for clarification, clarity of the phasing of all the sidewalk and pathway construction." And I think at this point, we may want to turn this back to our Planning Director to give us some thoughts on the actual boardwalk that Venture Church would like to have discussed.
Yeah. Let me try to go to the bottom here. What's, what's being proposed, it's along M-59. This is the church property, and along M-59 is a pathway that would extend all the way across the entire frontage of that property. Towards the western portion of it, that you can't just do a pathway, it would have to be elevated above the ground, that's a wetland area, and so in order to do the pathway, you'd need to do a boardwalk in that area. And the church, in my discussions with them, have expressed concerns with constructing that boardwalk. Two primary reasons, as near as I can tell. One, is that there's significant cost associated with that, and then two, it doesn't connect anything further to the west, and there's no immediate plans to develop the property to the west. So that boardwalk would essentially just end, and they had concerns with constructing it. And then after many, many years, they were concerned that the boardwalk would deteriorate in its condition. So they're asking to have that requirement removed or waived.
Yeah, and we should make a note that this is a Venture Church obligation.
Right.
Not this developer's obligation.
Right.
Emmett's?
Well, I just wonder how we deal with that, and if this is the right time to deal with that, because it's the church, church's responsibility. It's not necessarily part of the site plan, is it?
Actually, it is, because this is an amendment to that.
Can I, can I ask you what that vertical path is between the road and the proposed sidewalk area, just kind of west of the second drive there? Yep, just west of that, right there.
In this area here?
Yeah, what is that vertical path?
That's, that's the access to the Center Lift Station.
Oh, that's to the, okay, that's the existing access?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I guess I can understand the concern the church is having, especially because that western portion is not developed. And then maybe when that is developed, and there's further clarification on what the development of M-59 is gonna be, then we can kind of figure out that transition between the two properties. But I would at least like to see the eastern portion of that, the, you know, the walkway at the roadside there, you know, built.
Jeff, are you referring to the, anything concrete be built, but anything wood hold off, maybe till a future date?
Yeah, or whatever makes sense, if you just want to end at that drive, because really, all we want to do is provide access for the, you know, the residents of that community and the church community to get out and, you know, for, you know, other modes of transportation, right? So just the connectivity there. So if we at least have that portion of it, we can, you know, do a little bit, but...
Well, it is, it is already defined when they have to do it. I think it's Phase Three of your project is when they have to complete the sidewalk. So my concern with it in not requiring to do it is that we do, we have required everybody to go lot line to lot line with their sidewalks along 59, and I know we talk about the sidewalks to nowhere.
Right.
And if we only put in the pavement piece, how do we get the boardwalk piece at a later date after that? And I don't have the answer to that.
Well, it can be a requirement, right? It could be a note on the plan that it's required, but it can be built at a future time.
You want to comment on that?
Well, I guess my concerns are, I'd like as much specific details as you can on In my line of work, whenever there's vague or undefined terms or conditions, it's always a more of an uphill battle for me to enforce that or impose it on someone. So those are just my initial thoughts from, on that. I'm not necessarily opposed to that idea, I would, I'm just thinking at a future time, whatever that is, if they still don't want to do it, then I'm left in enforcing that in as much specific language as you can give would certainly help.
I don't know, I don't think you're saying they shouldn't have to do it. I think our requirement is ultimately that they have to put in.
Right.
A requirement, lot line to lot line.
Right.
Maybe I misspoke. I didn't mean to say that they didn't have to do it, but I was talking about at a future time, which is not determined, when I'm now trying to make them do it, and they are reluctant to do it at that time.
So maybe we need just that, we need, if we can come up with specific language, language that would state that. You know, just like the church, I can see that if they did put the wooden walkway in today, and let's say it wasn't for 15 years until the connection was done, and then that connection was done to the same engineering standards, the same materials, but now you've got 15-year-old wood adjacent to brand-new wood and structure, is that gonna be a concern there? And so I understand the side, you know, the sidewalks to, you know, nowhere, we have them, but I'm concerned about the same thing, that we make sure it gets done.
Troy, can you be, can we be specific that the church is responsible for the installation of the sidewalk and the boardwalk from property line to property line? The cement portion needs to be installed, and at Phase Three, as already written in the document, with the boardwalk to be installed when the boardwalk is installed to the property to the west.
Yeah.
Is that specific enough?
That's specific enough, or if, if you want something maybe like in 10 years, or sooner, if the property to the west is developed, then that way, after 10 years, they could always come back here and explain why they're not ready to do it, or...
Is that, is that getting what you're getting at?
Yeah, because really, the only benefit to that is once that other property, well, once we're connected, you know, all the way to 23.
Right.
But also, the only benefit to that portion of it is once that other property's developed. So it's just a dead end if it's, you know, if they put it in now, so it doesn't make sense to do it now, so... But it is a requirement per our ordinance, so I think that's specific enough, it's a requirement per our ordinance, but we're just waiving there, you know, they don't need to do it right now.
Yeah.
The boardwalk piece, is that specific enough? This already addresses all of it. So we'll allow the boardwalk piece to be installed when the boardwalk or sidewalk is developed to the west on the neighboring parcel.
So not, not the 10 years, so Troy, you had mentioned a timeframe, so we could...
Well, and now, do you want that on top of that?
I always ask for as much as I can get here, but what I'm hearing right now is the pavement portion of the pathway is installed at Phase Three, as is outlined. The boardwalk portion can be put on hold until the property to the west is developed and a pathway is installed at that time.
Is developed, or a pathway is installed.
Yeah, I would say or, yeah, I would say or.
Because if the township comes in and put pathways on other parcels, the church is still responsible for this boardwalk piece.
Right.
Okay.
The township may take care of the piece to the west at some choosing, but they are financially obligated to put in a sidewalk and a boardwalk, property line to property line, with the boardwalk at some point in the future. Clear?
Yep.
Clear enough? Okay. You guys all good with that?
Yeah, and I just want to comment something.
Sure.
I'm sure we've all seen those boardwalks, they really don't hold up well, you see them all over the place. In the future, maybe there's something we can think about that is a more permanent type of a solution. Because once they install it, I don't know the life of it, it might be like eight years. I mean, my gosh, you know what I mean? We should think in the future.
Well, I don't know, I was telling Troy, the ones over in Howell on the south side of 59 that were installed are all on concrete piers.
Yep.
And then the womanized wood sits on that.
Sure.
So it's probably whatever the life of your deck is.
Right. I just think in the future, we should try to explore if there's a better way for everyone.
Hopefully, we can come up with a comprehensive plan to connect all of the dead-end sidewalks in the township, but we tried that already.
Yep. So we're all good with that?
Yep.
If so, we can move to page five, item three. This one is an item just for discussion. If you recall back at preliminary, they had shown us some pictures of some homes, and we approved of what those homes looked like. When it came to memorializing all of the, what was required, the request came back from the applicant, you know, we're just seeing it in words. And my opinion would be that words are the best way to describe, otherwise, we're gonna get four houses. So they've described, as I read it, you've described size of homes and architectural features and materials, is that the way you would convey that?
That's correct.
So they're defining brick, they're defining square footage, the typical things you would see in master deed bylaw requirements for subdivision, rather than those three or four pictures we saw. And are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I guess if there's enough description there that, you know, it gives you that flexibility that you're seeking, and we're comfortable with our materials.
Yeah, I, I... Yeah, I read them, they got into the, you know, the brick and the square footage. I'm trying to remember the other things that were in there, because I read this like a week and a half ago.
Minimum, uh, roof pitch.
Sure.
You know, two to three-car side entry garages. We definitely portrayed typical house that we're looking for, that we, we still gave ourselves the ability to adapt to the market, but we gave ourselves enough architectural baseline to make houses consistent.
Right, and the problem with just putting the pictures in there was that it was three houses. And how would you describe the house that the next guy wants, when it's not in there in a picture? And if you pull out master deeds and bylaws, you take a look at that stuff, and I've been on association boards, we've always had them in words, as, as they've just described.
So not just a picture, the written word?
Yeah, no pictures. They were all words. Ranches will be X amount of square feet, one and a half stories, minimum this size, two-story this size, brick on the face, side entry, two, minimum two-car garage, those types of things. And those are the words that are in the document. Are you comfortable with that? Okay, all right. Next up would be page six, and this relates to the emergency access, and at preliminary plan review, someone in the, at the Planning Commission had said, "Could you grass over, throw some topsoil, and seed on the emergency access drive?" And I think you have some comments to that.
Well, it's gonna be a temporary access point, so at some time, it's gonna be either removed, or a house, or it's gonna be a permanent access point that's gonna be there for secondary means of degressing. I think it's kind of counterproductive to put grass and topsoil over it, and you have to maintain it through the winter time. As soon as you drop the plow, it's gone, and it's from time to right back out through the same old order. So that was my thoughts on that.
Okay.
Well, and I would have a question, how, how grass and topsoil holds up over gravel? What we have, spring thaw going on, and a fire truck has to drive across it, and it's completely tore up, or maybe it gets stuck on it?
Yeah, I don't recall where the comment came, it was just noted, so they had to respond to the comment that was made here at the table. I'm fine without grass on it, personally.
Yeah, I am also.
I agree with you. I, I would say in the summertime, the other problem is, is that that two inches of topsoil is gonna dry out, and that's gonna be a nice brown strip anyways, might as well be gravel.
Or just let it go naturally, huh?
Yeah. Next up, we'd be on page eight of two-thirds of the way down. There was a comment made that the applicant should consider requiring homeowner contributions into a private road maintenance fund. Thoughts, comments?
My thoughts on that would be to allow homeowners association to put together their budget for maintenance, supporting maintenance, and while it's in their best interest, I think it is their opinion on how they want to spend those funds.
And I guess also, from a condominium documentation standpoint, the structure for those budgets are already in the documents, and I think you overcomplicate and make problems for associations if, because the documents require them, the master deed requires the association, the developer initially, and then the association to come up with a budget every year, under the condo documents. And as part of those, those documents, the Condominium Act does require that the budget include a reserve. That's in the Condominium Act. There has to be a reserve as part of their budget for ongoing maintenance items. Not all associations follow that, but it's in the act, they're supposed to do it every year, so if you try and make something in addition to that, it sort of messes up what's already in place in the documents. You're sort of adding something to the structure that's already there, and the structure that's there is what's mandated by the Condominium Act. So really, what's, what's being talked about is really already in place. So I, I think it's really already covered. It doesn't specifically address that one issue, but it does say the board has the obligation to do that, and the Condominium Act does say you're supposed to set aside of all the expenses you have every year, you're supposed to take that whole budget, add 10% for things that come up, like roads. So it really is already covered under the rubric of the Condominium Act, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So just to clarify, what I'm understanding is, someone's responsible to take care of the road, and what you're saying is the association has a...
Yes, the, the association is responsible. Once the developer's done, and he's sold the homes and has moved on, then the board that takes over for the association, they have the responsibility under the condominium documents to take care of the roadway.
Okay.
And as part of their, whoever's elected to the board is part of their fiduciary obligation, they have to, you know, assess funds on the homeowners', homeowners in an amount that's appropriate to do all of those things. And the act says they're supposed to set aside, they're supposed to take into account future ongoing costs, including having to resurface the road down the, down the road when it starts to deteriorate. That's all part of the structure.
Okay.
I agree. As I said, I was on association boards, and the 10%, we did, and, you know, it is for repair and maintenance of all your capital-type items, we had woodchip trails, those we have to take care of. I think the comments in here, because being that Livingston County is so heavily developed with private roads, when these roads get in disrepair, these associations have come nowhere near to collecting enough. 10% isn't nowhere near enough to take care of a road that's 20 years old. And so I think you find these neighborhood associations coming back to the township for assistance or help, or the Road Commission. That's why the comment's there. But I totally agree on the 10%. My thought would be that they're fine, I agree with them, but I'll say, I know it says 10%, but 10%, no board is willing to ever collect enough from those homeowners every year to what it really is gonna cost, and you hope you collect enough to do general maintenance, crack ceiling, those types of things. Because they're gonna be responsible for snow plowing also.
Right.
Because it's a private road.
Exactly.
So, you know, we had a pretty big budget in the last subdivision I was with, and we dedicated the 10% specifically to roads, and we were always able to keep up with crack ceiling and a pothole here, but when it comes to milling down and resurfacing the road, it would be virtually impossible to collect enough from those homeowners every year, because you'd be, you would be voted out as the board if you collected what you really need.
So what happens then when they have got to that point where now you need help?
Well, I, I'm not having dealt with those as much, because we didn't get to that point. My guess is that you're gonna, your bylaws state that your board can go out and obtain bids, and then they're gonna have to make a decision.
Take an assessment, a one-time assessment?
And they're gonna come back and assess those.
Okay, but they're still responsible, and it won't come back?
Right, no, the, the bylaws, in addition to the ongoing annual budget.
Sure.
There's provisions in there to allow them to make a, a special assessment for exactly those needs.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, the mechanisms are all in place in the documents to do that, as unpopular as they usually are when boards have to, have to do those things.
They're very unpopular, because as I said, you know, we collected a lot of money, but when it comes 20, 25 years down to rebuild that road?
Sure.
You're talking millions of dollars. Did you collect millions of dollars from your neighbors? Probably not.
And I guess our concern is that, you know, it's maintained, I mean, it's part of our community, and it's not then left where it's like all of a sudden it's a problem.
Right.
We just want to make sure that we have that assurance.
I think they have it in there.
And so if it's in there, then it's good.
It's gonna be up to the board to determine how to take care of it. So our next item up for discussion, I'm flipping, I'm past 10 now, I'm on page 11. And down about 80% of the way, can you just add the color of the park furniture?
The color of the park furniture?
Is, is missing, you just need to put it on the plan.
Yep, sure.
Okay.
We were just looking for not pink or forest, or fire engine red, I guess. And then our seventh item is on page 13. Up at the top, I guess we have some landscaping plant number disagreements, if we could just get those numbers fixed. Looks like you're a count of 11 off. That one work for you?
Yes.
So I think that was the seven that either the Planning Commission needed to talk about and/or make note of. There is one other item here in a recommendation that I think we need to turn over to Troy, and that's on page 17, under Recommendation, Item Two, this temporary cul-de-sac comment. If you can fill us in on what that means, because we had nothing in our documentation regarding that.
Yeah, let me, this again is a little different site plan layout of the, of that condominium development, and as it comes into Phase One, that road will end here, and it will come over to this point, and it will end there. And what's being proposed at the end of it are gravel turnarounds in these locations. And in speaking with the fire authority, they just wanted some assurance that those gravel turnarounds will be built to hold up to their trucks, and they mentioned certain curb weights and axles, and it was all fairly complicated, and I thought the best thing to do was just say, "Built per their standards."
Does that work for you guys?
Yes, sure does.
Okay. So we've kind of been through all of it, are there any other questions or comments? As part of the requirements, they're gonna have to meet all the governing agencies' review letters. For those watching at home, and it looks like this was fairly quick, they've been here numerous times, we're down, down to the finish line, so that's why there wasn't a lot of discussion on some of the other details, because we are, we are at the end of this program with them at the Planning Commission.
Troy, Troy, can I point out maybe just some bookkeeping on page 15?
Yeah.
Under, at number seven, under phasing. When they talk about the three phases, they, Phase One is proposed to be lots one through 23, and Phase Two probably should, it says Phase 22, should probably read Phase Two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments for them? Anything you'd like to add? You've talked a lot over the last few months. If not, we're ready to entertain a motion, there is one located on page 17.
Okay, I'll try. It's long, that's why we're all stalling. Okay, so I'm moved to forward, is that where I begin?
Yep.
Moved to forward, Plan Development, Final Site Plan, Application Number 530-F, Final Site Plan for 64 single-family site condominium units on the plus or minus 42 acres of undeveloped land north of the Venture Church site, to the Heartland Township Board for approval with the conditions listed. One, the applicant satisfied the conditions of approval recommended by the DPW Director, Township Engineer, and Fire Marshal on the forthcoming construction plans and or stamping sets. Two, temporary cul-de-sacs be constructed and approved by the Fire Marshal. 2. Temporary cul-de-sacs be constructed and approved by the Fire Marshal. 3. The applicant revised the Development Agreement, Condominium Master Deeds, and Condominium Bylaws to address the comments of the Planning Department, Township Attorney, Planning Commission, and Township Board. 4. The landscape plan be corrected for consistency. 5. Conservation easement language be included in the documents. And 6. Let's see any other conditions. So I'm going to list the ones, are we good? About the boardwalk, anything about that, do we need to bring up here?
Troy, do you want that boardwalk comment in there?
Yeah.
Get it in there?
Yep.
Okay, so the way I understand it, we said the boardwalk would be installed when the property to the west is either developed and/or builds their pathway. We'd ask that, but the rest of it, of the sidewalk, would be built at Phase 3 as the concrete part.
Yeah, and I'll step in and just say I'd like to add that the church, the Venture Church build, are very clear on who's responsible for that.
All right. The other things we talked about, just in case it's good to put here, is that we described, we said that the verbiage for your housing is fine, you don't have to have drawings or, you know, renderings. We're good with that. The gravel drive is fine without the grass and the topsoil on top of it. We're good with the bylaws for the maintenance of the drive. And I think that was what we talked about.
Did you cover in number 7, talking about the extension, finishing of the walkway? Was it when the property to the west is developed?
Yes, that was the first thing I said.
Or at any other time? Just to make sure the township doesn't, okay, all right. Kind of missed that. Just to confirm that church takes care of it.
Yes, yeah. That's what I...
I think...
Think we got them all?
I think we got them all. I'll support that. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, a second from Commissioner Newsom, to forward the Plan Development Final Site Plan Application Number 530-F to the Township Board. Any further discussion?
Call of the night, apologies, I'm being late, I'm coming out of the answer.
All those, Troy, did you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose an a motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you, and good luck at the board, and welcome to Heartland. We have a second call of the public here. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything this evening for us? Seeing none, we'll move to Item 10. Planning Director Langer's First Planning Report.
We are looking to schedule, well, the Township Board is interested in scheduling a joint meeting with the planning commission. And they're interested in dates in April that may work for you. So I'm hoping to get some ideas for dates. In addition to that, we are looking at in the future, here in the near future, we're looking at our second meeting in March. We have a development proposal that's tentatively scheduled. I think that's March 24th, and I'm not looking at a calendar, so don't hold me to that date. But we have a, I'll call it a mixed-use development project on the corner of M-59 and Old 23. That will be coming in for what is that, conceptual?
Conceptual.
Yeah, sorry about that.
You're all right.
So we have another mixed-use project. The Mayberry Development Company has a project that's referred to as Newberry. I think it had that name before Mayberry became involved with it. But we're somewhat tentatively scheduled, possibly looking at a special meeting the very first Thursday in April, which, again, I'm not looking at a calendar, but might be April 7th or something to that effect. So then you have a regular meeting April 14th. So then the 21st would be open, and then the 28th would be another regular meeting. So as I started off this conversation with saying the Township Board is interested in dates in April...
Well, our budget is, I think we have a public hearing coming up on our budget, that's usually before April.
Is it?
Our budget has to be approved.
Yeah, this is just a joint meeting with the Township Board?
No, no, I know, it's just from a standpoint of like fitting everybody in. Of course, that'll be, we'd do it on Thursday, wouldn't we?
Well, we have in the past, it doesn't mean we have to. Yeah, so Troy, you're looking for some feedback, of course. We're looking for some options to give the board for joint meeting dates. But summarizing what Troy just said, we already have a meeting on March 24th, and the board's looking at April-ish. March 24th is filled with a conceptual meeting on a new program, that would, project that we haven't seen yet. And then the Mayberry project, Mayberry-Newberry, however you'd like to refer to it, is going to take a couple nights to get through their preliminary. And in the interest of time and consistency and keeping everybody's thoughts focused on the project, we were looking at April 7th and 14th for them. So what, so keep those in mind. We're getting off topic, but keep those in mind for the possibility of Mayberry gets submitted in time. I think that's where you were going with it, wasn't it?
Yes, yep. So that would leave the 21st as, that's, that would be a Thursday that is not typically a planning commission meeting night that you may have as an option to meet with the Township Board. Then you also have the 28th, which is a regular scheduled Township Planning Commission meeting night. I don't have anything scheduled at this point, but I anticipate we'll have something at that point. So you don't have a lot of open Thursdays in the month of April. I guess it's kind of my point there.
I don't know, Joe, how much talk you've had with them, they probably, given the fact that we're having a special meeting for a development, they probably wouldn't have an issue if we moved to the first Thursday in May as a second option, do you think?
No, I think that'd be fine.
If you just said April 21st and May 5th? It's only a few days into the month. And
Yeah, May 5th, we're...
For the reason that we're already going to have three meetings in that month, and the fourth available day is an option we've given them.
So what are you looking at, May 5th?
April 21st and May 5th.
I'm not available on the 21st, but that's okay. Don't schedule around me.
Take those two options?
Yeah, I'll take those.
Okay, Troy, whoever.
Yep, I'll take that. Okay, I've got one other item, I guess. I have been in communication with the real estate broker who is now going to be marketing the Walmart department store, if I can call it department store, big box store. So it looks like that building, that site is going to be on the market. They would not say or would not reveal what their plans are, but they did have some ideas. So I anticipate having further conversations with them about that, so.
I think it would be great for Kroger. And then like maybe a Whole Foods to take over that Kroger. I think Kroger's like outgrowing that building there. So I think Kroger would fit really nice right there.
Offer the suggestion.
I'm sure they got the thought of it. Kroger just took over the, over in White Lake?
Yeah, that big one.
They took over with a site with a Kmart.
Yeah.
Right.
And they're redoing the entire thing.
Right, looks huge.
It's going to be huge. I don't know what their model is, but maybe they're trying to...
Well, Kroger has been building stores that are more like Meyer, you know, where they have things beyond grocery. Not sure all of what they have, but I know they have a model that's something bigger than what they have here. All right.
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, well, welcome, by the way.
Oh, thanks, thank you.
Yeah, we don't bite. I do, I do usually, I do.
And you're sitting next to him. Be careful. All right, let's move to Item 11, Committee Reports, anything from anyone? A motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
All right, we have Kalani and Murphy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay, none, we're done, thank you and good night.